We apologize, started a little bit late. We just had the other meeting and it took us a little while. We all needed a party break, you know? You know how it is. Thank you all for coming. I don't see. Do we have the remit in the audience? Okay. Anybody in the audience like to render an invocation for us? Anybody in the audience like to do that? We certainly accept that. Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Lord, to this time again, to this great and to this great wisdom and understanding to us, Lord, to this goodness to this time and to this wonderful presence. Your God, as your protection, should keep you from those who do this.
Thank you. Join me in the light, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any councilmen have any objections to this agenda? Hearing done, the agenda is approved. unanimous consent. Does the mayor have any special presentation? Is that correct? Okay. Prove a little minutes. Anybody have any objection to the minutes that will be approved for this evening? Hearing done, the minutes will be accepted unanimously. unanimous consent. And now we'll all sign it, please. And we have one councilman absent. Field office evening. But at least your mayor can. But we do have, in addition to have more, we do have our mayor with us, our city clerk, city attorney, our department heads, and most of all, our citizens out there in the audience. Thank you all for coming. Yeah, if you would, please shut off any electronic devices you have, so we can have a semi silent meeting. The republic hearing we're going to have is going to be on the CDBD EE grant. And is anybody in the audience that wants to speak for or against that grant? Okay, not, uh... Okay, you're going to present that in the talk? You get it? Would you identify yourself? Go ahead and present.
I'm David Fox with Fred Fox Enterprises. I'm a signee. She's a partner with Signin. So far as part of the application's middle. This is a second public hearing for 2017 development block grant application. The city of Crestview is considering applying the Florida Department Economic Opportunity for granting economic development category amount of $1,49,970 under the FFY 2017 Small Cities Development Block Grant Program. Each activity that is proposed at least seven percent of the funds must benefit low modern income persons. The activity dollar amount is estimated to benefit the low modern income persons, which the city of Crestview is considering applying. First category is sanitary sewer facilities. Estimated budget is $112,355, and it will benefit at least 51% low modern income. The second activity is water line extension. Estimated cost is $51,540, and it will benefit at least 51% low modern income. The third category is street improvements. Estimated cost is $59,355, and will benefit at least 51% low modern income. The fourth category is flooding drainage. Estimated cost is $12,355, and it will also benefit at least 51% low modern income. Engineering estimate is $90,368. Administration estimate is $83,977 for proposed budget of $1,49,970. The project will undertake the destruction of sanitary sewer and this station and four main extensions of six inch water main for estimated 769 feet. Construction of entrance road Patriot Lane and flooding drainage improvement relates to construction of entrance road. All proposed infrastructure improvements are needed for the construction operation of the Pinnacle of Crestview Assisted Living Facility, which will be located at 1200 Patriot Lane in the city of Crestview. The Pinnacle of Crestview ALF will contain approximately 70 assisted living beds. The long term of Crestview LLC, the project developers, estimate the Pinnacle Crestview ALF facility will result in creation of minimum 30 full-time equivalent employee positions. All thirty of these new full-time equivalent employee positions are being claimed for points in the application. At least 51% or sixteen of them must be for low modern income individuals. All sixteen full-time equivalent low modern income positions claimed for points in the application will be full-time positions. The Pinnacle of Crestview ALF facility employs more than thirty individuals. At least 51% of the individuals employed will remember the low modern income as a family, purchasing appointment with the Pinnacle of Crestview ALF facility. Thus, the national objective benefits of low modern income will be realized by this project.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any questions? I want to make sure everybody understands that this is not the city committee. I mean, all this is our permission to go forward with the grant. Is that not correct?
Correct. This is approval to submit an application for the project.
Okay, I'd like a motion, please. I want to make a motion.
If I may read the recommended motion that I just received at the conference this afternoon. The motion should be moved to submit the proposed application to the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Have the motion have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to, and a second to, would you read it again?
The motion is to submit the proposed application to the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Any discussion?
Who's to make it? My number eight. Somebody didn't make that. I just, not me, you need more.
No, I don't have much. Okay. Do you have any ready man for?
Yes.
Do you hand it out, please?
President.
Yes, go ahead.
I move to submit, please, a proposed application to the DEO.
DEO.
It looks to me like a date. DEO for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. To submit the proposed application to the DEO. Any further discussion? Please go along with it. The motion carries four to zero with one absent.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for earlier clarifying the 75th amendment. Next item we have is Order 1673, resulting in 29.39 acres of all path of the road. Is there anybody in the audience who's going to want to speak for or against this Order 1673? Saying that, Madam Clerk, could you read the ordinance, please?
For the Order Number 1673, read by title. In order to the city of Crestview Florida, providing for zoning of 29.39 acres more or less of real property, located in Section 32, Township 4, Norangring, 3 West, of Los Angeles County, resident, suburban single, MS, and agricultural, AA, district zoning, the city of Crestview, single or multifamily, well, 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 zoning zone R2, providing for authority, providing updating of Crestview zoning map, providing for several ability, providing for effective date. This is the second reading of Order Number 1673.
Ms. Gaylord, would you explain that to us, please?
Gentlemen, this is, you know, people do get this.
Would you raise your mic up just a little bit, please? Good, thank you. I want anybody here.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Good, good. This is the property that's on, uh, Obethel Road, directly across the street from Davis and Middleton School. It was first brought to our attention when they requested a comp plan. It was annexed in 2006, and they shortly were part of our long-term comp plan. And they were granted a medium residential, however, before the DCA was finished with their comp plan, the developer had interest in it. It has recently sold, and it requires city zoning. Your single or multifamily dwelling zoning R2 is one of your most restrictive, multi-family dwelling district zonings that can be applied to the property, and they have requested that, so...
This is the second reading, so we've seen this before. Can I have a motion, please?
President.
Yeah, go ahead, Miss Clark.
I move to adopt Order 1675, read by second reading, send to the council president, mayor, and city clerk, district secretary.
So, could... We have a motion double second to adopt Order 1673, second reading, and send to the council president, mayor, and city clerk. Signatures. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion hearing carries four to zero with one absent. Now move on to 7C, Order 1673. Anybody in the audience here speak for or against this one? This is the I-ten and N regulations. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
President. Did I hear you say 1673 again?
You probably did. I'm 667.
You did, yeah.
Thank you. That's why you sit. No, no, right hand side of me, Mr. Clark. Give me a line.
Order Number 1674, read by title. In order to the city of Crestview Florida, providing for authority, providing for the amendment of Chapter 102, of the order to the city of Crestview Florida, adding Article 24, I-ten vendors, multi-vendors, hubbers, and solicitors, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances to the extent such conflictly, providing for several ability, providing for effective date. This is the second reading, Order Number 1674.
Gentlemen, the intent of this article is multifaceted. It seeks to address many concerns associated with I-ten vendors. Mainly, it is to aid and encourage small business development and entrepreneurialism, while protecting the interests of established brick-and-mortar businesses, to assure that I-ten vendor locations are appropriate and will not create any unsafe or unsanitary conditions, nor put undue strain upon nearby brick-and-mortar establishments. Thirdly, to ensure that the parking for the vending vehicles, or the placement of equipment, merchandise, and any wares, will not adversely affect the public amenity or the aesthetics or functionality of our street gate areas. Finally, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all citizens and residents of the city of Crestview. We probably realize the majority of our vendors are actually mobile food vendors. And our, um, the state provides extensive regulations for all food services, facilities, and vendors, whether you're seating, non-seating, permanent, temporary, mobile stationery. You have the Florida statutes, chapters of 500 food products and 509 lodging and food services establishments. Your DBR sets down the administrative rules for food, for public lodging, and food services establishments. Chapter 61, six... If we begin at the north end of town, you have what used to be the Pounders location, which is now your Wings of, uh, Wings on Wheels, uh, mobile vendor of Pounders, is now the Pounders Restaurant, Brick and Mortar, and the Windexy Shopping Center. If you come further south, you have Matthew's Royal Barbecue, which is, works in conjunction with the Woodbridge Church in order to provide parking assessment areas for him. We have an adjacent parcel near the Pawn Shop and, um, that's here on Highway 90. You have had several vendors there. O'Reilly now hosts in their parking area, the Hot Dog House. Everybody knows where Nellie's Lupia is there. Lupia on Wheels adjacent to the, uh, Car Wash across the street from Gophier. We've had a longstanding gyro stand there, adjacent to Taco Pals. And Ruckup LLC is now adjacent to the Ford dealership, and is featured as a mobile vendor in our news bulletin. And of course, we do have Main Street Eats, which is primarily mobile food vendors on our Main Street area. We've been very successful with our food vendors, and they are very appreciative, and, um, we will only wish we had a few more that would sort of accentuate the flavors that were now missing since Mondo's gone, and our other, uh, tropical, it's gone from, from the Pawn Shop area. The remaining vendors, to lesser degree, are peddlers of merchandise. Zoning regulations control the brick-and-mortar facilities within the city of Crestview. They provide for traffic, stormwater, making sure that we meet all the development codes. So we utilize the same zoning regulations in order to control our merchandise peddlers, which to the bigger extent are your auto vendors. And to a lesser extent, which will be the other primary vendor we have or lend it to, Christmas tree. They are separate categories in our ordinance, as you discovered. I think we have done a fair and concise job. We are fair to the citizens. We are fair to the brick-and-mortar establishments, and we are fair to our food vendors, as well as our other merchandise I-ten vendors. Is there any questions that I might can answer for you?
Gentlemen, question, comment?
I have one. I was reading with a group the other day, and I couldn't find exactly what was covered, but we have a church group that, you know, they feed, they have their, uh, two kids, and sometimes groups lock sign on church property. How would they, would they be covered under this?
Yes, sir, that would be covered under this.
It's not, it's not, but they have got licenses to go up and give up food, and they normally give inside of it.
They actually have special requirements at the state level for such food distribution as your sushi kitchens, and it's, um, it's covered completely differently, so it's perfectly all right.
But nothing like this, there's no ones.
The new ordinance, it actually does any type of solicitation and temporary food services. Like I say, they're permitted under special, and it's mentioned here about your exceptions.
Yeah, I looked at the exception.
It's mentioned under your exceptions, and your, like I say, your food services are actually, charity food services are actually under a different line of regulations.
So whatever applies inside, probably applies on outside.
Right, exactly. And, um, I don't think it's covered. We only have a one-page application. It's for all, so any of them that's required, got less than a page there, and, um, they're not specified out because they're more or less stamped in.
Okay, okay. Any other comments, please?
I would just say that the last time, I think we went over the ordinance, overregulated regulation, so, I'm not supporting it. But at this point, I would call a motion.
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
I move to adopt Order 1674, on second reading, send to the council president, mayor, and city clerk.
A motion second to adopt Order 1674, on second reading, send to the council president, mayor, and city clerk. Signature, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And carry three to one, and one absent. Okay, one to, uh, item seven. D, Order 1675. Madam Clerk, could you read it, Madam Clerk, please?
Order 1675, read by title. In order to the city of Crestview Florida, many city code ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 4, officers and employees, providing findings of adopting Division 4 City Manager, Section 2-180, City Manager Authority over City Personnel, adopting new provisions addressing and clarifying the authority of City Manager over City Personnel, providing for several ability, appealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with, to the extent of conflict, and providing an effective date. This is the second reading.
Gentlemen, this is inserted in our code, the Division 4 City Manager, clarified in Section 2, 180, City Manager Authority over City Personnel. We read this into the record at our first reading. Essentially, it just clarifies some of the, uh, the authority portion of the code, and it will, um, fully elaborate on the responsibilities of the City Manager, as it is working with, with the department heads and employees, and will modify the responsibility there so that it's clear cut that they will qualify the employment actions of the department heads, and handle all aspects of filling vacancies and positions of the department heads, and providing their employment is by the majority voted of the council. It shall have full authority over acting on behalf of the council, under each of the departments, department head, employees of the city, and have full authority of the operations of the city. And however, when any action is required by the charter or ordinances that are part of the city council, such action shall be taken by the City Manager, so that it is confirmation of the city council in ordinance, in accordance with the charter and ordinance. They have authority to dislodge, suspend, and/or remove any department head or employee in a manner consistent with the adopted ordinance and the personnel policies of the city. The City Manager may authorize a department, I'm sorry, authorize any director or other administrative officer who is subject to the City Manager's direction and supervision to exercise these powers with respect to the ordinance in that officer's department, office, or agency.
Gentlemen, what we ask for is a second reading. Any other comments, questions for Ms. Gaylord? Not a call for vote, please. A motion?
I move to adopt Order 1675, on second reading, send to the mayor, council president, city clerk, district secretary.
Second. A motion second to adopt Order 1675, on second reading, send to the council president, mayor, and city clerk. Any further discussion? Please go along with it. And the motion carries four to zero with one absent. Thank you. No to 7E, Order 1676, and an extension of 3.69 acres off of James Lee Boulevard West. Madam Clerk, would you please?
Mr. President, Order Number 1676, read by title. In order to annexing to the city of Crestview Florida, 3.69 acres, more or less, of contiguous lands located in Section 7 and 18, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, and being described as set forth herein, providing for authority, providing for land description, providing for boundary, providing for land use and zoning designation, providing for amendment to the base land use and zoning maps, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment, filing, providing for filing with the Clerk of Circuit Court of Oaklusa County, the Chief Administrative Officer of Oaklusa County, and the Florida Department of State, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for several ability, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of Order 1676.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Gentlemen, this is the Phillips Energy, uh, property. A lot of people would call it the old Tate Oil, uh, establishment, and it, uh, has a large warehouse on it now, and the multiple structures there that allow for a fueling station. Phillips Energy is annexing it in, in order, and they do plan to renovate and redevelop what they can, and actually some new development there in order to provide the same type of business, which will be a type of fueling station and warehouse there. The property is mixed-use in Oaklusa County. It will come under the city as, um, as being commercial and abiding with commercial zoning. Is there any questions I may answer?
No questions, no comments. Could I have a motion, please?
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Ms. Clark.
I move to adopt Order 1676 on second reading, and send to council president, mayor, and city clerk for signatures.
Sir, second.
A motion second to adopt Order 1676 on second reading, and send to council president, mayor, and city clerk for signatures. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The motion carries four to zero with one absent. And item seven F, Order 1677, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Order 1677 reads by title. An ordinance of the city of Crestview, Florida, closing vacating and abandoning the platted 60-foot wide right-of-way of James Street, providing for update of the Crestview base zoning and land use maps, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for filing of this ordinance with the Clerk of Circuit Court of Oaklusa County, providing for several ability, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of Order 1677.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Gaylord, go ahead.
Gentlemen, this is the, approximately the southern 210 feet of right-of-way of the platted James Street as part of the first edition of the Jack Kennedy Edition, which was recorded January 10th, 1956, and recorded in plat book two, page 104. The property owner, James Edward Barfield, owns property on both sides of the right-of-way, and just to reiterate how right-of-way is, is vacated, it is vacated in the center and is distributed to the property owners on each side. Mr. Barfield owns both properties, so Mr. Barfield will obtain the whole 210 feet. It's never been developed. It's not used as accessway. As a matter of fact, it, uh, James Street actually would, if continued through this right-of-way, would dead-end into residential homes. So, um, if there's any questions that I can answer or clarify?
Comment, question, could I have a motion, please?
Mr. President. I move to adopt Order 1677 on the second reading, and send to council president, mayor, and city clerk for signatures.
We have motion second to adopt Order 1677 on second reading, and send to council president, mayor, and city clerk for signatures. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The motion carries four to zero with one absent. At this point, I call, anybody in the audience who would like to address the city council? At this point, I call anybody in the audience who would like to address the city council on any topic that's on tonight's agenda. Anybody in the audience like to address the city council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Could I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Cox.
I move to approve the consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
I have motion second to approve consent agendas A and B. Any discussion? Not, please vote. And the motion carries four to zero with one absent. We have no resolutions this evening. Committee reports, Mr. Cox, you're going to brief us on the Fair Housing Power, you're going to give us PowerPoint presentation. And would you tell us how to tie it into the grant, maybe that would probably, that's the question I had.
You get points in your application for going to Fair Housing activity, and is the presentation considered one of the activities? Go ahead, Ms. Fox. The Fair Housing Act was passed in nineteen sixty-eight, was updated in nineteen eighty-eight, then again in nineteen ninety-five. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination due to race, color, religion, national origin, sex, and familial status, and disability. Under the Fair Housing Act, it prohibits discrimination and intimidation of people in their homes, apartments, and condominiums, developments, nearly all housing transactions, including the rental sale of housing, provisions, or mortgage loans. What housing is exempt? The Act exempts owner-occupied buildings with no more than four units, and single-family housing sold or rented without any use of a broker. Senior housing exemptions exempt some senior housing facilities and communities from liability for familial status discrimination. Right underneath any state or federal program that HUD has determined to be specifically designed and operated assists elderly persons or intended for solely occupied persons fifty-five or sixty-two years of age or older. So if you have a fifty-two, five, or older community, you can be exempt for these requirements. What is prohibited? No one may take any of the following actions based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin. You can't refuse to rent or sell housing that's available. You can't refuse to negotiate for housing based on location or one of the activities or the items or classifications. You can't set different terms, conditions, or privileges for sale or rental of a dwelling based on one of the terms or conditions or classifications. You can't falsely deny that housing is available for inspection, sale, or rental when it's still available. For profit, persuade, or try to persuade homeowners to sell or rent dwellings by suggesting that people of a particular race, age, sex, et cetera, move or are about to move into a neighborhood, or deny any person access, members who participate in an organization, facility, or service related to the sale or rental of dwellings. Housing protection for families with children is unlawful to discriminate against a person whose household includes one or more children who are under eighteen years of age, which is the familiar status classification, which one of the minor children lived with a parent or legal custodian, and that would be also included in a fifty-five or older community. Additional protection, if you have a disability, have a physical or mental disability, including hearing, mobility, or visual impairment, cancer, chronic mental illness, or HIV AIDS, that stands to limit one or more major life activities. And something people don't understand is also as regard as having such a disability, housing provider may not refuse to let you make reasonable modifications to your dwelling at your expense. So if you are handicapped and you're in a wheelchair, and you'd like to rent an apartment, and you have to add a wheelchair, they cannot not rent to you because of the wheelchair access. They have to allow you to make the modifications, but they can require you to reverse the modifications when you move out of the rental unit and take it back to its first state, the state when you rented it. A building with no pets policy must allow a visual impaired tenant to keep a guide dog. The Fair Housing Act does not protect a person who is a direct threat to the health or safety of others or who currently uses illegal drugs. If you have a complaint, there's steps you go through for your complaint. If you think your rights are being violated, what you'll do is you'll get down the name and address of the person you're violating by, the name and address of the person you complain is against, the address or other indication of the housing involved, a short description of the alleged violation, and then the date actually alleged violation happened. Because some of the cases, some ordinance doesn't have a forty-five day window, and you have to have a complaint within. The Southeastern Regional Office for HUD complaints is out of Atlanta, Georgia, to file a complaint. The best way to file a complaint is actually to go on the HUD website, hud.gov/fairhousing, and you can file a complaint through the website. What happens when you file a complaint? They notify the person who filed the complaint and alleged violation of the filing of your complaint. They allow the respondent time to submit a written answer to the complaint. They investigate your complaint, they actually have Division of HUD just for complaints, determine whether or not there is a reasonable cause to believe the respondent violated the Fair Housing Act, and they notify you and the respondent, and the complaint is investigated within a hundred days of filing your complaint, provide reason for the delay. Decide to go through the state level and not the federal level, or you can go through the Florida Commission on Human Relations, and they also have a website, and there's also a phone, a number available, and a toll for you, toll for is one eight hundred three four two eight one seven zero. This is a package available at City Hall. Any questions? This is just a brief information on Fair Housing.
Appreciate it, Ms. Fox. Any questions, comments?
Thank you. The sign sheet's still going around. If everybody would sign in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see no scheduled presentation from the public, so at this point, what we'll do is do thirteen A and B, and I'll go through the mayor and the council. Madam Clerk, are you prepared to address the A?
Thirteen A, yes, sir. The, I just left this on the agenda just so we could clarify a couple of issues, or not issues, times and dates on the City Manager interviews. At the meeting on January the tenth, we set the City Manager Skype interviews or Internet interviews for Thursday, January the twenty-fourth, beginning at five o'clock. The first interview will actually be at five-ten, to give us a little time to get set. The interviews will be set in thirty minutes apart with a five-minute break in between. The IT department along with Mr. Nielsen are working on getting in touch with all of the candidates to make sure that they're, are Skype, they've tested it yesterday, or Friday, for three hours with no delays, no skips, no anything on an internal. The second interview for the two or three candidates who were determined at the January twenty-fourth meeting is set for five-thirty on February the fourth. I just want to remind everyone that the January twenty-fourth meeting will not be streamed live due to the fact that we don't want to give any candidate fair, unfair advantage over the others by watching the answers and watching the questions. It will be available for viewing after the meeting on January the twenty-fourth. The council has yet to determine whether or not the February fourth meeting will be broadcast or not, but we will be making special arrangements for the two or three candidates who are not in the room at the time to be in a different room in the building so that they're not able to hear what the questions are on the fourth.
What was the time on the twenty-fourth?
The meeting will start at five, the first interview will be at five-ten.
Ms. Cox, if you have a question or comment.
Comment, when we get down to the three finalists for City Manager position, the city should cover travel expenses for out-of-area candidates, the finalists. Professionally, that is customary and proper.
That's, I mean, that's up to you gentlemen, I can't.
I'm throwing that out, but we should do that. We should cover travel expenses.
Yeah, want to comment on that? Councilman Cox is saying.
I agree with that, that's customary.
And maybe in overnight. When you're a finalist for a major position, that's customary and proper for the employer to do that.
Thank you, we have consensus here. Teresa, did you get, didn't we have a conflict on the twenty-fourth? Were you able to de-conflict that?
We have sent out, I haven't gotten any response from them, so we're just going to send it through to the board, allowing them to know the members to also know. Normally, I can respond immediately, I don't work too bad, so.
I'll see her tomorrow night, she'll be here tomorrow.
What are you going to do, to change the location or change the date?
We're changing, we're going to change the date. That's the easiest thing to do.
Okay, all right.
But I wanted to give her a chance to give you a date through schedule.
Thank you for doing that. And I believe you're going to address the alternate for the library cooperative board? Or you're not?
No, okay. They were given out, I contacted the library coordinator and her assistant got back with me on Friday, and according to the interlocal agreement that is signed, number eight, the governing board is Dr. President Suzanne, it says, appointed representative, most public, and publicly elected official with voting privileges in their respective municipal votes, it says, each participating government body shall designate at least one alternative representative to act on behalf during his absence. So that means that we cannot have an outside volunteer, we must have one of the councilmen to actually be the volunteer.
Who is our primary choice? I don't remember.
I am.
Mr. Hayes.
Okay.
And he's rarely absent, as I have heard from the other coordinators and the associates there, that Mr. Hayes is never absent, but it dictates that he must have an alternate if he is.
So we're looking for a volunteer from the people here to be the alternate, which you probably hardly ever have to be activated. And don't say Councilman Fairclaw just because he's not here. That's not fair.
Also, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
It's, they only meet six times a year, so I think you might have got that information.
That's it, that happens within your packet, they give you the dates, they meet January twenty-third, March twenty-seventh, May twenty-second, July twenty-fourth, September twenty-fifth, and October twenty-third. So, and they meet at Niceville.
Niceville. Three-thirty, and you're not going to be out, four-thirty, rarely over an hour.
I believe I understand the dates, they meet on the Wednesday, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
If you're the trend, that's a bad time for me.
I can't do it because you have to have voting rights in municipality, and in April I lose my voting right here.
Well, where's our newcomer? Can you volunteer?
That's a possibility. I don't know what to tell you right now because we don't have a volunteer, so we'll have to try again. Keep on trying. All right. Okay, we're going to move on, move on to the mayor and see if he has any words of wisdom for us.
I'd like to tell you, Mr. President, that last week, our police department conducted a job fair for law enforcement officers, and it was the best turnout, I think, that we've ever had. And what was really great about it, that so many folks were already certified that they were there. Chief Grant, can you give us a little bit more information on how we end up our personnel at this time?
If everything goes like it's supposed to, we should be full on dispatch and be down about two officers.
And that's better than we've been for quite some time. I'd also like to take just a moment to remember that Chief Joe Trailer, who spent twenty-four years here with us, who actually built the fire department, where he took that department in twenty-four years is impressive. So remind everyone that his funeral service will be tomorrow afternoon at three o'clock at the community center, and I'm sure everyone would be invited to attend that. I think we're going to have a lot of firefighters from around the region will probably attend that service, but he meant a lot to us, he's meant a lot especially to me. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Hayes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a letter here from the mayor of the Funak Springs, Bob Campbell, and I might read that. It's the City of Funak Springs, January eighth, Dear Councilman Hayes, as mayor of the City of the Funak Springs, I want to be sure that you and your staff are aware of the journey into Main Street America. The theme is for, and I'm not going to read all this, for forty, the event in the Funak Springs beginning the twenty-fourth and going through the twenty-seventh, it's going to be fulfilled with lectures, a walk, a tour.
January?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry.
And live entertainment and a taste of the South. It's promising, as fulfilling this promise and becoming a Main Street American destination. You know, they're in the running for a Main Street Association Award down there. Basically, the tickets are, and what I'll do is I'll give this to the clerk, and she can post on the bulletin board and, or put it on the website for anybody who might be interested in it, but if you'd like to participate in that, it's in a letter, welcome, inviting all the city officials as well as, I'm sure, city residents here also. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Hayes. Councilman Blocker.
Mr. Dushan.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cox.
Just retired chief Joe Trailer's funeral tomorrow afternoon, three o'clock, community
Thank you. It's kind of odd because Joe Trailer has kept a pretty low profile since he retired. Hadn't seen him a whole lot, and he called me Monday morning. I said, stranger, where you been? And then he dropped me a letter by the office on Thursday. You know, so it's just, wow, you know, I hadn't seen him in all that time, and how he's gone, and like the mayor said, you know, dedicated individual, not only to the city, but he spent a career in the Air Force as a fire chief before he came to us in the city. So we should get a good turnout at his funeral tomorrow. Oh, I visited the dog park this afternoon, Wayne. Four people out there in that forty-degree weather, they were freezing. I was going to wait for Ken was going to show up and take some video, and I finally had to say, you know what, I'm going to take a picture and leave, because it was, it was freezing out there, and they're running into some obstacles, you never know what's going to happen. They're trying to dig out the poor cement, and as they're digging, they're hitting cement that's already in the ground, and they can't, it's too big a piece to get out, so they have to bore through the cement in order to get the post in, but they've got plumbing in. You guys got plumbing in already, and they're going to put the post in and all the designs, and so it's moving along. I'm glad to see that, even though it's that cold out there. Okay, I think what I'll do before we go to the ordinance is go ahead and round the room with the department heads, too. So, Mrs. Steele, do you have anything for us?
I don't really have anything. I've just been informed I've got a water main leak on Main Street and MLK intersection, eight-inch main leaking, so they're, they're working on it, just to prevent that area while, hopefully we'll get it fixed sometime today, tonight.
I know you will, but maybe if you don't, it'll just turn ice coming out, and you won't have to worry about it.
I hope, I hope we get it before the ice, because if it's on, we could go ice. First day of working, guys, we're going to, no, no, no.
Mr. Police Chief, you have anything for us?
Yes, sir.
Marie, you have anything for us? Department you have anything for us?
No.
Okay. Ms. Kayla, you have anything else? Mr. Holly?
I just wanted to make a comment about Chief Trailer. You know, when we had the lawsuit about a right-of-way out of Fox Valley, they'd argued about that thing a long time before I got here, and they keep on arguing it, and they finally, Chief Trailer signed a statement of what he was going to do, because he couldn't get in and out there, and he ended, he ended that lawsuit right then. And I'm sorry that I can't go to that. I really liked him, I did legal work for him too, but I... I really liked him, I did legal work for him, too, but I'm not going to be able to attend the funeral. I'm starting at two o'clock tomorrow afternoon. We've got two exposures and others, a workshop, and a city board meeting all in that afternoon.
We understand. Madam Clerk, do you have anything else for us?
No, just to let everyone know, we've put it out on our social media and website. The city administrative offices will be closing at two-thirty tomorrow so that any of the staff who wishes to may attend Chief Trailer's funeral without having to worry about.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to staff reports and recommendations. I'm sorry.
If you don't mind, if I'm not mistaken, the Marlowe the King Parade is this Saturday coming?
I just told one way, I haven't heard a thing about it.
Haven't heard anything.
You haven't heard anything?
No notice, none.
Well, my understanding it is Saturday, but maybe they'll get to have a contact with you, I'll have to try to contact.
They, I think they applied for the road closing.
They applied for a permit, but we're sending it around to the different departments, but we haven't heard back since the permit was applied for. And I think all of our departments signed off on it, it's pretty much the same thing every year. However, I haven't seen any advertisement whatsoever, so.
What time?
The lineup is at nine-thirty, I believe, and the parade starts at ten.
Right, that's my.
Same location?
Same location.
That's my understanding.
Nine-thirty, you said? And parade starts at ten?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And there's also a Main Street event on Saturday, too, from eleven to two, Chili Cookoff.
Yeah, that's right. In the afternoon, we have the Great Chili Cookoff. Starts at four, I believe.
No, it's eleven to two.
Hmm?
Eleven to two.
Oh.
Is there a recipe?
Eleven to two.
You don't have any?
No, I'm not even a taster. Okay, if we could have ordinance sixteen seventy-eight, read to us, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance sixteen seventy-eight reads by title. An ordinance of the City of Crestview, Florida relating to the Crestview Community Redevelopment Agency, providing for authority amending chapter two, division four of the Code of Ordinances as amended by ordinance fifteen ninety-eight, providing for amendment to section two ninety-six authority, section two ninety-nine, chairman and vice chairman, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severalability, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number sixteen seventy-eight. The purpose for this ordinance, and it was developed by our CRA attorney, although the, has to be passed by the city council. In our current ordinance, the, automatically, the city council president and vice president becomes the CRA chair and vice chair. However, on April the first, there will not be a city council president, because the mayor at that point will become, will run the meetings, and then there will be a mayor pro temp or vice chair. So it was determined that we need to, at the last meeting of the city council prior to April the first, elect a chairman and vice chairman of the Community Redevelopment Agency to run that meeting at the first meeting in April.
Makes sense to me. Anybody have any comments or questions for the city clerk? Go ahead, Ms. Cox.
Yes. The verbiage in this just prior to April one of each year? I would think that would be on or after April one.
The CRA attorney and I discussed that, but the problem would be, the way we set our CRA and council meetings now is that the CRA meeting is prior to the city council meeting. If by some strange thing we have a special meeting on April first, we would have to have a special meeting after the first of April to set that. And the reason we set it just prior to is the thinking is that we would have a short special meeting prior to the workshop at the end of March to elect those two positions, and we would not have to have a special meeting before the first meeting in April. Because last year, we elected the chair, I mean, the president and vice president of the city council at the last meeting in March so that they were ready to take over at the first meeting in April, and this provides for that same situation for the CRA chair and vice chair.
Okay. I think typically that's what we've done. Any other comments or questions? Would I have a motion then, please?
Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Kaylee.
I moved adopt ordinance sixteen seventy-eight on the first reading and send the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion second to adopt ordinance sixteen seventy-eight on first reading and send a second reading. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And the motion carries four to zero with one absent. Thank you. Now, anybody in the audience like to address the city council on anything? Anybody in the audience like to address the city council on any issue whatsoever? All right. Seeing none, thank you all for coming. This meeting is adjourned.